Thank you. I.
Good morning. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It's June 14th. It's 10 o'clock and two of the three county commissioners are here. Commissioner Arnett is unable to attend and the meeting is called to order so we will now have consent and approval from the county administrator. Almost said city administrator.
Okay. We have four exonerations for $724.58, minutes for June 7th, 2023. Vouchers: General County, $355,004, 2289. Cole Severance, $10,009, 58911, $1,008, 2779. Chestnut Ridge Park, $7,167, 83. Camp Muffley, $2,026, 27. Mason Dixon Park, $1,003, 2933. Mon County Center, $4,007, 0625. Transportation Levy, $72,166, 74. Library Levy, $17,007, 1262. Assessor Valuation, $5,004, 3291. Payroll, $1,00748, 31170. Morgantown Industrial Tiff, $5,075, 85. Parks and Recreation, $36,005, 7778. Purchasing Card Vouchers: General County, $24,005, 0535. Chestnut Ridge Park, $416, 83. Camp Muffley, $89, 85. Assessor Valuation, $320. ARPA, $2,154, 60. For a voucher total of $2,297, 82.59. We have budget revisions that require state approval for the general fund, for state grants, law enforcement, regional jail, juvenile detention, recycling, Visitors Bureau, and Capital Outlay Central Garage. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website and fiduciary orders for June 14th, 2023.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second. Proud to move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. We are at introduction of new employees, personnel changes. Is this someone from the assessor's office? Good morning, Patrick.
Good morning. Everybody should have a letter in front of them. Give them notice board to seek approval for the hiring of Ms. Laura Rose as a data entry specialist. Ms. Rose will be replacing Tina Gidley Gibson who left us a couple of months ago. Ms. Rose's start date will be June 21st. She'll be full-time, 35 hours a week, benefits eligible, and a 90-day probationary period.
Move to approve the personnel position as presented?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We have the sheriff.
Good morning.
Good morning. I have with me Benjamin Miller, who will be hired as a full-time process transport officer starting on June 16th with full benefits, starting salary of $2,807.20 per month.
Move to approve the personnel as presented?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have litter control? Or you just go?
Alex is here.
Oh, there he is. Okay.
Good morning, Alex.
Good morning, Alex. How are you doing?
Good. I am here to seek approval to hire Cody Coleman. Cody will be started as a full-time litter control worker, sorry, litter crew worker on June 16th, starting salary of $28,000 per year with a six-month probationary period, benefits eligible. Cody's going to be replacing some, Trayvon, who left us last month, to pursue other endeavors.
Okay.
Move to approve the position as presented?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Camp Muffley. Do you want to just read those?
We have, excuse me, Ryan Michael Childers. He's part-time seasonal maintenance, not eligible for benefits for Camp Muffley at the rate of $12 an hour. His start date is today. And we also have Wyatt Sharpless, also part-time seasonal maintenance without benefits, also $12 an hour, and his start date is also today.
Move to approve the personnel positions as presented?
Second. All those in favor for both say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any others?
No, that's all.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to comments from the public. Please feel to state your name, address, and you have three to four minutes to discuss any issue you want.
My name is Jason Charles. I am known by no other name. I have no address to provide for you for, it was taken from me when I was unlawfully incarcerated. So all the ailments you wish to remedy can be solved by higher morals: the homeless, the drug use, the crime, all symptoms of low moral standards. If the leaders of this land are not of the righteousness of the highest standard, then those who follow them cannot be of a high standard. For it is written, "No one is above their master." Or, if you would like, "A stream does not flow higher than its source." If a man resolves in his own heart to conform to the righteousness of the highest authority, and for his reward he is thrown into a pit by a person acting in the authority of a lesser degree who is in the wrong. The truth of the Word of God teaches us that we are bought by the blood of Jesus Christ, 1 Peter, Chapter 1, 18 and 19. "For so much as ye know that ye were not redeemed with corruptible things as gold and silver, from your vain conversations received by tradition of your fathers, but by the precious blood of Christ, as a lamb without blemish and without spot." As to his authority, he is above all, Matthew 28, verse 18. And Jesus came and spoke unto them.
If this is going to, this is not a place for a religious pulpit or long religious issues. So if you will have an issue, I'd appreciate if you would stick to the issue. Thank you.
Must I get my preacher's pre-approv-- I mean, I thought last week I, you know, spoke of the same.
I've made it very clear, this has been going on for months and--
Yeah, it's an issue that hasn't been resolved.
--and this is not a place for a religious pulpit or issues. If you have specific concerns, we are more than willing to listen to them.
I have a specific concern, which I have voiced for week after week after week.
And we have talked with you. So I'm not going to continue this anymore. I've been more than lenient. We've talked with you. We've met with you. We've done everything we possibly can.
So one speech is limited. It can, this is not a public forum.
This is a religious speech. This is not--
I don't see how this is religion. It's just quoting the truth of the Word of God.
Again, I've requested--
Standard that is a high standard to my, you know.
I've requested, one more time, I'm asking you. Thank you.
With threat of arrest?
I didn't say anything except I've asked you to keep the issue.
Okay. So if I limit the references to scripture?
Keep going. You can, you can keep on going.
Is that good enough?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'll limit the references to scripture. Okay. I will just ask questions that never get answered.
Sure.
You know, that's, that's something I do quite often. "I claim that you are a bad tree that produces bad fruit and knows not good, for you have exchanged bitter for sweet. You punish good. I claim that I was bought by the blood of Jesus Christ." Okay, I'm not allowed to say some of this stuff, I guess. "I am 100% his possession. I conclude that I cannot be the possession of any other." Christ said render on, no, that's a, that's a quote from scripture. "My identity is not the created identity of any other." Not only do I claim this created identity, to which I do not claim, not only do I know it is not needed, but I live knowing it is not needed, and it only obligates one to a gluttony of low moral requirements. My, my, okay, fine. My, my point is that if, well, what I stated in the first paragraph, I mean, you disrupted my whole speech, but, you know, I, I, should I give my, can I, can I ask for pre-approval of my speeches? Would that be going forward?
No, that, I'm not here to have a discussion. We've met with you. We've done everything we possibly could, Jason.
I mean, I can't, I can't make a point.
You even told us we have, and I, and if you have a concern or a problem--
Would you like for me to just--
--I'm more than willing to listen as the commission.
Yeah, I, I have a concern--
But it's not going to be a religious--
I have a concern that a man is willing to put me in a pit for no reason whatsoever. And I fear, every day, every day I walk down the street, I fear that I'm going to be put into a pit again. That's a concern of mine, because it's, it's not an irrational concern, because it's happened before, and I believe that it will happen again. And I'm always trying to point out as to why that may be occurring. Okay? So that's my concern. Do you have a remedy for that concern?
You have legal remedies to address those concerns.
Yes.
This is not a legal court. This is a county commission, regular meeting to do county business. We have a public forum for people to come in and voice concerns about matters that come before this commission. This commission is not a legal entity to address those concerns that you're talking about. You have those, you have those avenues. Go address them.
Please. We've tried to work with you, so.
And I have said that--
Okay. But this isn't a backboard. Thank you, Jason.
Can we leave you a copy of my--
Sure, sure. That's, that's no problem.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Maybe you can peruse it and there's no animosity.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the commission? Seeing none, we will close comments from the public. Okay. Grants. Do we have any grants? Colleen Kuhn, welcome.
I have today the grant contract for the Community Corrections Grant for the Report Center. They were awarded $190,000. I have a resolution that reads, "The Montegalia County Commission met on Wednesday, June 14th, 2023, with a quorum present and passed the following resolution: Be it resolved that the Montegalia County Commission hereby authorizes the Honorable Thomas C. Bloom, President of the Montegalia County Commission, to act on its behalf to enter into a contractual agreement with the Division of Administrative Services, Justice and Community Services section, to receive and administer grant funds pursuant to the provisions of the West Virginia Community Corrections Grant Program." So in addition to the clerk signing that, I have the grant contract that will need to be signed, the standard conditions and assurances, schedule of payments, which they're quarterly payments, certifications regarding lobbying, compliance with the Equal Employment Opportunity Plan. So that's all for the grant. And then I also have requests for reimbursements. The first one is for the SEEP grant, and the amount is $7,331.60. And then the Community Development Block Grant, and the amount of $1,854.72.
Move to approve the president signing the grant documents as presented?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Correspondence, and we have a bunch of it. Public hearing on sale on land located in Star City, West Virginia by the West Virginia University Board of Governors.
This is similar to the one you had last week, just for a different property. It's 1.411 acres, located in Star City to O'Reilly Auto Enterprises. And I believe this is described as the area behind the Aldi in Star City.
Yes.
Where the former parking area was that they had for the hospital. They are required to provide notice, and it will be published in the Dominion Post on June 19th and June 26th. If anybody wants to peruse the description, we'll have it here in the office.
Okay. Letter of thanks from Mon County, Special Olympics regarding fiscal year 24 grant funding.
The grant award was $6,000, and they're just, it's just self-explanatory.
Thank you. Letter of thanks from McCurty'sville Community Building regarding the funding for the porch project.
You all have funds set aside in your Cole Severance to cover projects for the community centers throughout the county, and they were doing a porch project. This is a multi, multi-step process, and the, the funding was $8,458. And they sent in some pictures and a request for reimbursement, but they did send some pictures and invited you, and a schedule of events, and invited you all out if you wanted to go.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. This one's interesting. Letter from the Director, Joseph Thornton, West Virginia Department of Homeland Security Division of Administrative Services regarding annual per diem jail costs.
Do any of you want to, either one of you want to address this?
Um, sure. I'll take a stop.
Yeah, it's hard to explain.
They've changed the, the way that per diems for the next year are going to be calculated. The good news for the public, it's about for us, as long as everything stays the same and we have the same amount of days, inmate days in a year, and that doesn't increase, it's actually probably about a 5% decrease over what, over, over last year.
Great news.
Yeah. So that, that's good news. Like, if you take our current year budget, that represents about $108,000 savings. And what it does is they're, they're taking the, they take the current, they're giving us a discount on the current years per diem for the first 80% of the, of the inmate year, days, for the year. And then once we hit 80, anywhere from 80 to 100%, we will pay the new per diem rate, which is 5448. And anything over 100% of those days, so when we say if last year our, if our calculated inmate days, and it's based off of our census, it's .52 of whatever our census number is, that number calculates to about 50,000 days. Once we hit that 50,000 watermark, at that point, we'll be charged 120% of the per diem for the remainder of those days. So as long as we stay where we're at, or less, it's actually a savings to the, to the county. So I think I've explained that.
Yes, I appreciate it.
The, the letter was very convoluted, but once you sit down and kind of reduce it to math, it makes sense, so.
Well, we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Resignation Notice received from Garrett Stansberry, Dog Ward, Mon County K9 Adoption Center.
Well, we're very sorry to see Garrett go, but hopefully he's moving on to bigger and better things. We've got a couple more that's not on the agenda.
And I have some too.
There's an invitation, we received an invitation to a open house for Hazel's House of Hope, and that is going to be June 20th, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. They're going to have a special presentation at 11:00 a.m. That technically is West Virginia day, so we won't be in an office. Colleen and I were both invited, but I don't know if you guys have your schedules clear for that day, but I can put it on your calendars if you like.
Okay.
If you would.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay. On Monday, we received a piece of, of course, interesting correspondence from the Attorney General's Office, and this is regarding the West Virginia First Foundation. This is an entity that was created out of the opioid litigation and subsequent legislative The, the state is going to be divided up into six regions, and Commissioner Bloom has set in on several trainings regarding this. They have asked the one county in each region that is the most populous county in that region, so we have been designated for our region, which is Region 4, to host a meeting or an election, a meeting that's, and subsequent election, to elect a director, which is technically just a board member. And you all need to do that by, this meeting has to happen, and the election has to occur by July 17th. So I talked to Melanie from the Commissioners Association yesterday. She's going to be hosting an online training for the counties that are doing the hosting so we know exactly what we need to do. She's working with the Attorney General's Office and also the Municipal League to make sure that all the municipalities are informed of this meeting date. So we'll need to set a date for that meeting. We'll need to sit down and probably look at the calendar, because I know we've got a lot of stuff coming up. But I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up. We can talk more about this during our staff meetings, but we'll, we'll be looking at dates soon to get that set.
And for clarification, there are 11 board members, one from each of the regions, and then the governor picks five.
Correct.
So that means we're one of 11 that will, then that board will decide how the funds will be distributed on different projects.
And they're looking for a variety of, of nominees, but their general knowledge, skill, and experience to advance the foundation's goals, nominees should have the expertise in one or more of the following disciplines: substance abuse treatment, mental health, law enforcement, pharmacology, finance, healthcare policy and management. And they, they are discouraging any elected officials to apply.
Right.
So they really want--
If we were to put forth our public health officer or something like that, that would make sense.
Potentially. Somebody from QRT. I mean, if anybody's interested, please let us know. We would be happy to take any, you know, names. You all just get one, as a county commission, you all just get one nomination.
Right.
That will be--
But there's 12 counties and all the municipalities, but we all then have to decide before the 16th on only one individual to represent our region?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that was confusing, but yes. Thank you. You did a nice job on that. Okay.
Okay. The, the last piece, I think, Commissioner Bloom, you're going to discuss, the last piece that I have anyway.
About the--
About the trash.
Yes. Okay. I was notified that in the newspaper, there was a public notice to change rates upon application without proposed effective dates, and it's by the Allied Waste Services of North America about the Mountaineer Transfer Station. The concern that, that the person had, and I'm really glad we knew nothing of it, but they are looking at the landfill and assessment, an increase of 73.79% increase, the recycling charge of 54.29 recycling increase, plus other increases. So I wanted to make this aware publicly, and then I'm going to talk with the county commission to see if, as we review these rates, to have a response to the Public Service Commission. And again, this was just proposed on May 17th, 2023, and it was a public announcement, but there's been no other announcement that we're aware of.
Well, I'd assume that's a notice, and I assume they'll have a public hearings.
As of, it reads, I would assume they would have to have a, yeah, they would have to have, so when we do that, we may have, want to--
I will, I will access the Public Service Commission's website and get this actual, get the information, because I'm sure there is a deadline in order to submit comments.
Right.
You know, my concern is that we've already set our--
Budget.
Our budget, that we, the budget line that we use to charge all of the, the drop-offs, the recycling containers that get emptied, you know, every day. And so that would drastically affect that budget.
That budget.
So, so I guess I'll give the information and give it to you on Friday.
Okay. Thank you. I also have one other one. This is from Stephen Blinco, Star City Council reporter. "I'm writing to you as a concerned citizen of the county regarding the lack of attention that our railways and medians are receiving in terms of grass cutting and weed approval. As of Sunday, June 4th, when he was driving and he's continued to send me letters through the areas including Granville, Star City, Westover, Morgantown, and along our interstates, I'm concerned about the height of the grass and the weeds that I've witnessed. I do not know who is responsible for this, but I do know that many of the areas fall under the jurisdiction of the West Virginia DOH. The issues range from a lack of visible signage in areas to a concern for wildlife and humans who may be in the areas where high grass and weeds could keep drivers from seeing them in enough time to respond. On another note, the areas that are being trimmed have a lot to be desired. First thing people can see when entering our, our area, the grassy hillsides and medians that borders our roads. Please, whoever is doing these jobs, help make these areas presentable." He's asked me to turn this over to the DOH, and he's also done that. And also with it is a picture, and it shows, you know, where the, the medians are three feet high. And that was all during the time when we didn't have rain. So it is something that is a concern. I know the commissioners have passed this on, but we will re-submit this again to them. And I've done that once, but I'll do it a second time. And I just want you aware of that. Okay. We have no unfinished business, new business. Consideration of requisition number 78 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
Move to approve requisition number 78 as presented?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 This is the sales tax district collections, and with this collection, that puts us over the $11.7 million mark, which is the highest we've received, and it's a 23% increase over, over last year. So as we discussed a lot last week, the district is performing and performing well.
Do you want the amount?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. So that is good news. Okay. Consideration of appointments at the Mon County Development Authority?
We received a letter from Eric Carson and Russ Roderson at the Development Authority. They received correspondence from the town of Granville regarding Mayor Lewis's appointment to, as, as Granville's appointment to the Development Authority. They have, the Development Authority has vetted that. They have recommended that you all approve it. So really, you're just confirming Mayor Lewis's appointment to the Development Authority.
I move to approve the appointment of Mayor Patty Lewis to the Montegalia County Development Authority as the municipal representative for the town of Granville.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. See, again, "To consider issuing a request for proposals for janitorial service for the Montegalia County Courthouse and the Montegalia County Justice Center."
I move that we approve the release of RFP. Let me see the, the number. Sorry, I have it in my folder. The RFP 2023 MCC 001, "To provide janitorial services to the Montegalia County Commission."
May I second that? All those in favor, say aye.
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 And our staff will take the appropriate steps to--
Right.
--notice the meet, note, provide notice to the public and to provide notice to any prospective offers that may be interested. This is a tough one to try to get people to respond to, so we need to contact some associations, whatever, to make sure that we push the word out. We've been trying to, we've been trying to address janitorial services for the commission and specifically in the courthouse building and the justice center building for almost two years now, and this is--
Can't hire anybody.
Yeah. Can't hire anybody, so--
Can't hire them, they don't even show up for the interview.
Yeah, so we're going to try to rebid what we have out there and see if we can get more offers.
Do you have any other new business? Neither do I. Sean?
No.
Great. Reports from elected officials and department supervisors. I see someone here? Oh, I didn't know. You're just here to watch us. Okay. And Mark, you don't have anything?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Last, uh, John.
Oh, okay. Thank you. County Commission report? Sean?
That's Jeff.
I know. I went Sean, because there's no one here. That was a joke.
Since the last meeting, we had our Mon County Development Authority meeting last Thursday, and then in the afternoon, the administrator and I met with a background search vendor, provider, that seems to be going to provide a lot of options for our county. It was recommended by our HR consultants, and I think it provides us with a little, a lot more flexibility. Friday, we had staff reports. Friday night, I went to Winston-Salem to find an apartment for my daughter, so I was gone Friday and Saturday. Monday, I had lunch with the assessor. It's always good for Mark and I to catch up every once in a while, just to see things, to hear, hear what's going on in his office, and of course, it's always, it's always a lot. Today, we, well, yesterday, I met with the commission staff, our office manager and the county administrator, to discuss the janitorial RFP, provide the final input to that document so that we can get that out today. Today's a regular day. Tomorrow, I have Mountain Park Board Foundation meeting, and we have an MMPO meeting at night. Friday, we have staff reports, and then I'll be going on vacation for, well, I'll be semi-vacation. I'll be still available next week, but I'll be in, at the beach to try to rest up from to try to rest up from a rough, rough couple of months with all the graduations and all the school stuff and everything else that's been going on. I did want to address one thing. Last, when we were talking about our health insurance premiums, I believe that was two weeks ago.
Thirty-first. It was the thirty-first.
Yeah, the thirty-first. The, there's an AJR article that misquoted me. The quote was obviously vastly incorrect, because it said I made a statement that we, the county pays seventy thousand dollars per employee for every employee taking the insurance, which if anybody did the math, that's over half of our budget, and about six million dollars more than we pay for all of our labor for the whole county. So it was obviously a mistake, but we've received a lot of complaints about it. So I was asked to confirm that that was an incorrect statement. The AJR asked them to correct it. They, I said seventeen thousand. They print it seventy. Again, it was an honest mistake, an obvious mistake, and it's unfortunate that people, you know, want to make hay out of every little thing you say as a public official, that they can't just see an honest mistake for what it is, is an honest mistake by the media. But anyhow, I'm correcting that for the record, so that people know. Other than that, I don't have anything, Tom.
Okay. Yeah, as a county commission, I know I've never spoken out of line and made a statement that was incorrect. So I appreciate, yeah, that was one of those things that just happened, where you did say seventeen thousand, but it said it was interpreted seventy thousand. I appreciate you making that comment and clarifying it. I did have a meeting two weeks ago with the Health and Human Services Office of Refugee Settlement. Was asked to attend, and just some information that is interesting. We have a hundred and nine refugees in the state of West Virginia. There are thirty-two clients in Morgantown, of which fifty-seven percent of them are from Ukraine, and the other large amount are Haitian. And it was just more of an informational meeting, and they continue to keep, and upkeep on when the refugees come in and who's working with them, and they wanted the county commissions to be aware of that. So I did attend that meeting. And besides that, I have nothing else, so I move toward, well, I ask--
Move to adjourn.
Second.